Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. We pray tonight to find happiness in this new year, not by being shielded from all sorrows and pain, but by having the strength to bear them as they come; not by taking the easy path, but by being sturdy enough to travel every path we're on; not by avoiding hardships, but by removing fear from our hearts; not by receiving unbroken sunshine, but by keeping our faces bright even in the shadows; not by our lives always being pleasant, but by perceiving when people and their causes need us most, and by having hearts that are anxious and willing to help. We ask for all the people in the city of Suffolk to have love, peace, hope, and joy in the year ahead. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of January the fifteenth, 2025 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 is presented at this time. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Counsel, a motion would be in order. Councilmember Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Rector. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to approval of the minutes from the September twenty-fourth, 2024 joint work session with the school board. And a motion would be in order. Counsel. Councilmember Johnson?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Johnson. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Councilmember Wright abstaining.
We have no special presentations this evening, and at this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda in adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If any member of City Council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none, a motion would be in order to adopt the agenda as presented. What is the pleasure of counsel? Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Bennett. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers this evening?
No, Mayor Doeman.
Hearing none, please present the items for consideration.
Consent agenda item number seven, a resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to make certain additions and deletions to the urban highway system. Consent agenda item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate a justice assistance grant from the United States Department of Justice in support of the Suffolk Police Department. Consent agenda item number nine, an ordinance to appropriate funds from the Route Seventeen Special Taxing District committed fund balance and to transfer funds to the Capital Projects Fund in support of the Ironside Drive extension at the Point at Harborview project. And consent agenda item number ten, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the OBC Healthcare Foundation for the Suffolk Public Library.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council. In regards to item seven, it's a resolution to add eight road sections, two, and delete one road section from the state urban highway system for the purpose of the city receiving state maintenance funding. The specific streets are listed on the U1 forms contained under Tab Seven within your council agenda book. In regards to item eight, the city has been awarded a justice assistance grant from the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount of forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars in support of the Suffolk Police Department. The funding will be used to purchase new bulletproof vests. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. There is no local match required. In regards to item nine, at your work session today, you were given a overview of the Point at Harborview project that's been ongoing for several years. As part of that, of course, this is an ordinance to appropriate half a million dollars from the Route Seventeen Special Taxing District committed fund balance to transfer and to transfer the funds to the Capital Projects Fund. The funds will be used to assist with the construction of Ironside Drive extension at the Point at Harborview project. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenue and expenditures of the FY twenty-four, twenty-five Route Seventeen Special Taxing District Fund in the Capital's project fund budgets by the half, the five-hundred thousand dollars. In regards to item ten, the city has been awarded twenty-five thousand dollars from the OBC Foundation grant in support of the Suffolk Public Library Community Engagement Program. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the twenty-five thousand dollars, and there's no required local match.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilmember Johnson?
Move to approve.
Move for approval from Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Rector?
Second from Councilmember Rector.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion has been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we do have several public hearings this evening. Our first one is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from RR, Rural Residential Zoning District, to B2, General Commercial Conditional Zoning District for a portion of property located at four-thirty-two Kings Fork Road, zoning map twenty-five, parcel thirteen, account number two-five-zero-eight-six-six-seven-zero-zero. This is RZN twenty-twenty-four-eight. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council. The public hearings under item one and item twelve are companion public hearings. Assistant Director of Planning Meg Pittinger will provide the staff report for item eleven and stand ready for any additional questions you may have at the time of item twelve's public hearing. Meg?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager indicated, these first two items are companion items. It's a rezoning for the parcel and then a conditional use permit to authorize a certain use on that parcel. This parcel is located at four-thirty-two Kings Fork Road. It's in the suburban use district in the Central Growth area. This is the Suffolk Youth Association, Athletic Association property, the SYAA. The entire property there is quite large, but the part that they are rezoning is only two-point-six acres, the part that is in the lower right-hand corner on your screen, and that is also the part that the conditional use permit will apply to. To the north of the property, there's property zone RR. To the south, there is a Dominion substation and also additional fields owned by SYAA. To the east, there are a few single-family detached properties, also zoned RR. As you can see in this exhibit, this is a blow-up of what the conditional use permit and the rezoning is going to cover, again, just this two-point-six acres down in the corner. There is an existing building that is there that was built with permits as a storage building, and they would like to now convert that to do some indoor recreation within that facility. The applicant did submit a proffer statement, basically proffering out, and they're going to rezone, excuse me, to B2, General Commercial. And they did proffer out all other uses other than the indoor recreation and amusement facility, so somebody would not be able to come in there and do some other B2-approved use. They're proffering out all the other uses except for this indoor recreation. This is an indoor, a layout of the indoor of the property. They plan to use inside for indoor soccer and field hockey, also to have some small meetings. They've got some bleachers. The restrooms at that facility, if you've ever been there, are in a separate building outside. So again, all of that would be held within the building. There's existing parking that is on the site, so they would not need to, they're not doing any additional construction other than what is already there. And as stated, the conditional use permit will cover this two-point-six acre property as well, authorizing this indoor recreation use to be able to be on that property that is being rezoned. Again, it's an existing building, so there won't be any additional construction. At the Planning Commission's December seventeenth meeting, they did vote seven to zero to approve the rezoning with the proffers and the conditional use permit with the conditions. And I will stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Jeff Payne. I reside at one-hundred-and-twenty North Gate Lane in Suffolk. I've been a member of Suffolk Youth Athletic Association for thirty-five years, been on the board for thirty-three of those, and been treasurer for fifteen. SYA is a 501(c) nonprofit organization that has served our citizens in Suffolk for forty-four years. I think you all agree that SYA serves an important function in the city. Not only do we have thirteen-hundred kids out there playing a variety of sports, softball, baseball, field hockey, and soccer, but we also save the city taxpayers millions of dollars by providing the facility we provide. We do everything with volunteers, and we get essential funding from local foundations and businesses, so we continue to grow and expand and add buildings like we're talking about tonight. We believe we're the biggest volunteer sports facility in the mid-Atlantic region. We don't know anything else of our size. SYA's philosophy is simple. We want all kids to play of all abilities and at the lowest possible cost. All kids means all kids. We have a special needs program where we give the kids a free program, a free uniform, and a free trophy at the end of their season. We're there for kids. In winter, we lose our kids to Virginia Beach, because in winter, especially with the weather we're having now, we can't do satisfactory training outside, so we need an indoor facility. And we have hundreds of kids leave our organization, take all that money, and go to Virginia Beach and spend it there. We need to change that. We need an indoor facility. SYA has about thirty traveling teams in all the different sports. That means on any one weekend in our season, we have fifteen visiting teams on average bringing in business to the city. In the package of information you had, you have letters from all of our immediate neighbors, every one of them supporting our application for rezoning and the conditional use permit. In addition to that, you have a letter from Tim Kubenak, who is the principal of Lakeland High School, supporting our situation. And I have following me two or three professional people associated with SYA but not part of SYA who can speak to the quality of the program we offer. So I have following me Karen Arnold, who is the head referee assigner for soccer in the whole of Hampton Roads. I have, hopefully, if he makes it in time, Chris Wally, who is the head coach of Chauvin University, Chauvin College, and also the semi-pro team Lionsbridge in Newport News. I have Tammy, I won't give you her last name because I can't write it, I can't spell it, and I certainly can't say it, who is a professional soccer coach from Norfolk. And I have our founder, one of our founders, Harry Cross here to remind you where we all started. So, a few other parents may want to chip in, but we're going to try and keep this short as we can. So we ask you all to please approve this rezoning, but also please give some thought to the future and how the city can assist SYA to grow and meet the expanding population needs. We need more fields as well as this building, and we're running out of space. Youth Suffolk, SYA youth sports, there's nobody does it better than we do. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please, to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening. My name is Karen Arnold. I reside at seven-one-three Helen Avenue, Chesapeake, Virginia, two-three-three-two-two. I am in favor of this order. I am the senior referee assigner for Tidewater Soccer Referee Association. We provide ninety percent of the referees for the Tidewater area. I have assigned, and I am assigning currently for SYAA for the last twenty-five years. I also assign for Suffolk Parks and Recs. Suffolk is, Suffolk Youth Athletic Association is where the majority of my referees come from. They have a training program that is unbelievable, far superior to the one that the state even provides. So without SYAA, I would not have as many referees, and children would not be able to play soccer. Any problems or issues that we have with spectators or coaches, Jeff Payne is my go-to person for SYAA, and he deals with very efficiently and effectively. Without that support, we would not have our referees. I have children from the age of thirteen to adults to eighty years of age that are actively refereeing. I assign over ten thousand games per year, and again, I could not do this without the support of SYAA. An outdoor facility will, sorry, an outdoor training is very limited. With this new facility, it will actually expand our training and improve it for over four months of the year when we cannot do it with the weather that's here in Hampton Roads. I just hope that you all agree to approve this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Tamra B. Lobos Flores. I live at twenty-seven-forty Birch Street, Norfolk, Virginia, two-three-five-one-three. I am the owner and president of Wave Training Football Club, and I have been coaching for over fifteen years in this area now. I want to piggyback a little bit and let you guys know that I'm in favor of the facility going forward. I am currently training children that live in Suffolk. I am training them in Chesapeake, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, and Hampton at other indoor facilities currently. So you guys are actively losing your children to other cities, and you are losing the money that comes in with that to other cities. Soccer is one of the highest-growing sports in America right now. We have the World Cup coming up soon, but as the sport continues to grow, our area is not as competitive as it can be because we don't have the facilities to cover the needs of the community. I train, in particular, elite athletes or children who have the hopes to be elite athletes. We also have players who work with Chauvin University. We are currently outfitting our semi-pro team. It's a need to have the indoor facilities to train. I have been working with SYAA for a number of years now. I believe in their program. I support their program as often as possible, but I want to reiterate that there is the absolute need and necessity for there to be a facility for the local community. You do not want to continue to lose those players, because often, it's not just that you have a player that goes to play at a club in another area. If the family is committed, you'll have a whole family uproot and leave the area, so now you're losing the family that owns the house there. You're losing the family that attends the school there. That school, that child that goes to that school and they do the testing, that school is also getting funding from them. So you're having money just from one sport go out in several different ways. It is imperative that the city find a way to not only approve this measure, but find ways in the future to continue to support SYA in everything that it does. I would not come all the way from Norfolk on a whim. I am very serious about what I do in the sport that I work with, and I hope that you guys understand, there is a big future and a lot of opportunity getting ready to come this way, but if you don't explore it, if you don't help it grow, and if you don't nurture the forty years of commitment that you already have, you will lose it, and that will be very unfortunate for your constituents. I hope that you guys were able to understand my message, and Happy New Year to you all.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please, and we don't have a lot of time.
Good evening. Harry Cross, five-thousand Waters Avenue. It's my seventy-six years of Suffolk residence. I was one of the founding members of Suffolk Youth. This is an important project to them, but it's also very important to the city so we can keep these kids playing here indoors, and I appreciate your positive vote. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you. That concludes our proponent time. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel? Councilmember Bennett?
I move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Bennett. Councilmember Williams?
Second, Ed Mayor.
Second from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Rector?
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. I'm very much in support of SYAA. I can remember when my daughter, who is in her mid-to-late thirties now, first went out there. The first Saturday game that we went to in the spring, I told my wife, I said, "If you want to go to Walmart, now's the time to do it, because it looks like three-quarters of Suffolk is out here at SYAA." And she continued to play. As a matter of fact, she was part of the first all-girls traveling team that was coached by Mr. Payne's wife, Stella. So I have nothing but happy memories of my children, both my daughter and my son, playing soccer out there at SYAA. And so I just wanted to say that and say that I'm very much in favor of it and look forward to SYAA's continued success with what they're doing with our children here in the city of Suffolk.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? I'd like to wait one comment before we vote. We do have a motion on the floor for approval made by Councilmember Bennett and seconded by Councilmember Williams. And first of all, I want to thank everyone who's associated with SYAA. I want to thank those that had the vision. Mr. Cross is one of them. I think our kids participated at the very first game of SYA, which was actually played at Nansam and Suffolk Academy for a couple of years, and started with just a few teams. And I just live around the corner, so I've been able to see the improvements, the process, and how SYA has turned into what it is today. And from that very small start, getting the first field on Kings Fork Road, which I think we had three fields and none of them had lights, it was a big deal when the first lights went down. I think Harry and Bob Gillette and Bobby Johnson and some others spent hours and hours in to see how it's evolved. And SYA is playing a critical role in providing this type of service to our kids. Not only are we doing soccer, but we're doing baseball, and we didn't even have traveling teams back then. So obviously, I'm wholeheartedly in support of this, and I'm also in support of the city doing whatever we can to assist you, because I do know how crowded it's got it out there, and the number of kids that you've been able to serve is really amazing with a volunteer organization. So moving forward, I think we've got a few things in the works as well. So with that, we do have a motion on the floor for approval. If there's no other discussion of the motion, councilmembers prepare to cast your vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, our next public hearing is also related to this one, which is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor use on property located at four-thirty-two Kings Fork Road, zoning map twenty-five, parcel thirteen, account number two-five-zero-eight-six-six-seven-zero-zero. This is CUP twenty-twenty-four-twenty. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Meg stands by should you need any additional information on this item.
Okay, with that being said, before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Hello again, Jeff Payne, one-hundred-and-twenty North Gate Lane, Suffolk. I have nothing to add that I haven't already said earlier in the evening, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening. My name's Phil Poe. I live in twenty-one oh-four Kings Highway, Suffolk, Virginia. I've been associated with this organization since nineteen ninety-five, and three generations have been out there participating. I'm proud to have three granddaughters right now participating, and I've been through the ride to the beach facility, through the rush hour traffic years back, and I'd hate to try to do that now, so we really need this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a next speaker to speak in favor. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none. This public hearing is closed. Counsel? Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations. We'll now move to our next public hearing, which is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family daycare of five to twelve children on property located at one-twenty-seven Berkshire Boulevard. This is zoning map twenty-five G, parcel four, asterisk, one-thirty-seven, account number two-five-three-two-eight-five-one-zero-zero, and this is CUP twenty-twenty-four-ten. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, Meg Pittinger, Assistant Director for Planning, will provide the staff report. Meg?
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager indicated, this is a conditional use permit to establish a family day home for up to twelve children at property located at one-twenty-seven Berkshire Boulevard. This is in the Chucka Tuck Voting Borough and part of the suburban use district in the Central Growth area. This is a single-family house. This property is zone PD and is located in the Berkshire Meadows subdivision. PD zoning does not have any specifically outlined permitted uses, so what we do is we look at the most similar zoning districts we look at the most similar zoning districts to that. And so in the RC and the RM and in most residential zoning districts, a conditional use permit is required for a family daycare that would house five to 12 children. This property is, again, within a suburban neighborhood, so there are single-family houses, zone PD around it, and then there is an O&amp;I property with some apartments to the east. It is a two-story house. It's approximately just over 1,700 square feet. It's four bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. The applicant plans to just use the first floor for the daycare use. They're currently operating a family day home for up to four children, which is a permitted by right accessory use in a single family, but now they would like to expand that to do up to 12 children. The children will have access to the daycare room, the living room, the family room, and then the one bathroom in the kitchen will be used for food preparation. As I stated, they are currently operating a, with a business license through the city, a use of up to four children, and they would like to, she would like to expand the use. Section 31-701 of the Unified Development Order does provide some supplemental standards for family day homes for five to 12 children. They are required to have 50 square feet of space per child, which, in a space that includes the furniture and equipment. And so if the entire first floor is utilized, they would be utilizing 675 square feet of the home, and the minimum in that case would be 600. So they are within that requirement. The applicant proposed hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Staff has recommended hours of 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, which complies with what is outlined within the UDO. They do have a fenced-in backyard. They recently put a new fence up. The backyard is about 5,000 square feet, which meets the minimum of 1,000 for an outdoor play area. The use of the outdoor play area will be limited to 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, again, in compliance with the supplemental standards in the UDO. Planning Commission at their December 17 meeting did vote to approve this with a vote of seven to zero. And again, I will stand by for any questions that you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Meg. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shamika Dershen, and I reside at 127 Berkshire Boulevard here in the city of Suffolk, Virginia. And I am the applicant that is requesting the, my CUP to be able to provide that with the state, state to complete my state application. I'm a former 13-year Suffolk Public Schools employee. I was a special education teacher assistant for 13 years. I now assist some of Suffolk's children. I do assist some of those special education children by putting them on the bus. I am requesting this CUP because Suffolk is in dire need of more daycare facilities. And as I speak to you on this evening, I am asking you to open your hearts that you will allow me more opportunity to serve more of our children here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Shannon, and I reside at 165 Patriots Walk Drive in Suffolk, 23434. And I am in favor. My son is currently a student with the daycare, and I just wanted to express how thankful and grateful we are for the location. It's key location by the OBC Hospital. I could get right up on the highway. It's a really great location for us, and also she's a loving, caring, just excellent with him, with my son. And I would love for her to expand and allow other parents to have opportunities like we do.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none. Do we have anyone? Have we got no one coming? No? Okay. Hearing none. Do we have anyone who would like? Yes, maybe. You speak in favor, sir?
All right, good evening. How y'all doing? My name is Dennis Stokely. I live in 116 Cold Point Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. I'm just here to speak on the head for Ms. D. Pretty much like she said, we love to see her expand. She's cared for my daughter for a few years now, taught her many things. She's more than just a daycare. She goes through academics and so much more, grade and, you know, age appropriate so the children can continue to learn. She takes them on field trips. She provides a great opportunity for the kids to just expand their knowledge and their growth. And not only that, Christian-based woman, she shows plenty of love and support, not only to the children, but the parents as well. So we'd like to see, you know, continue on.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel? Questions, comments, or a motion? Council member Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from council member Williams. Council member Bennett?
Second.
Got a second from council member Bennett. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations. Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a parking commercial not owned or operated by a public agency use on property located on East Washington Street, zoning map 34G 25 parentheses two, parcel one, account number And this is CUP 2024-27. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, again, item 14 and item 15 here are companion items again. So Assistant Director Planning, Meg Pittinger, will provide a staff report under item 14, and will stand ready for any additional information you may need for item 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager indicated, these are companion items, and I'll explain how they are related. This first conditional use permit is a request to establish a parking lot not run by the government on its own parcel. This requires its own conditional use permit because it's on a separate parcel from the parcel where the use is going to occur. And this parking lot will be in support of the next CUP, which is the public assembly use on the property located at 506 East Washington Street. These are in the Central Grove area and the Core Support Use District and in the Whaleyville I'll go back to the other one. You can, you can see from this exhibit that the parking lot in this location, which is zone B2, it's bordered by M2 property and B2 to the south, and this parking lot, which can consist of 26 parking spaces, again, will be in support of the use next door. The applicant did provide a cross-access easement agreement to, between the two properties, which she owns both of them, to be able to utilize the parking on the vacant property for the use on the property with the building. The applicant proposes, these slides are in different order. The applicant proposes to utilize the space at 506 East Washington Street for the public assembly use. She wants to provide a community center for skills workshops, tutoring, vendor shows, and in addition to having multipurpose space for events like baby showers, birthday celebrations, ministry events, and retirement parties. The building is 2,371 square feet with around 800 of those square feet as the banquet hall, and then there's various other offices and storage rooms. The applicant states that there will be no employees, but that the business owner representative will be present for all event and that there will be no alcohol permitted on the property. Food is proposed to be catered and not prepared on-site. The applicant had proposed outdoor cooking of grilled food, but due to the limited amount of parking, staff has included a proposed condition to limit all uses to indoor only. That would not, however, prohibit the applicant for having a food truck, which would be a by-right use in the B2. So she could do that separately from her indoor uses, something that would not require parking. The UDO does call for one parking space for every 50 square feet of interior space, meaning that actually 48 spaces would be required for the proposed use. Because there's not space for 48 spaces, the parking, again, only has room for 26, staff has included a condition that limits the proposed assembly use to 1,300 square feet of the interior of the property, which more than covers the banquet hall and the bathrooms and some of the storage. So it should be adequate for the use that she has proposed. Planning Commission at their December 17 meeting did recommend, vote to approve seven to zero for both of the conditional use permits, and I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Roberta Branch. I reside at 1098 Union Branch Road in Coral Peak, North Carolina. I stand before you to speak first about the parking. It was 26 spaces that we do have on our property, but we were also asked to get an agreement with the church that's adjacent to the property, and we have that agreement with the church if we need additional parking. So we do have that agreement as well for the parking. I want to share our vision. I'm excited to present to you our vision for Pearls and Bowties Multipurpose Centers, which is going to be the name. It is a community-focused project designed to serve and unite our local area. The primary vision of Pearls and Bowties Multipurpose Center is to create a vibrant space that will host a variety of events aimed at strengthening our community. Our goal is to sponsor educational initiatives that provide valuable instructional services as well as direct service projects that offer assistance to individuals or groups in need. We plan to offer workshops in several key areas, including educational topics, entrepreneurship for our young men and women, mentorship, technology literacy for our seniors, and financial literacy for the community, among other things. Additionally, we want to serve as a hub for tutoring services and shows. We are committed to building partnerships with local organizations, including Suffolk Public Schools, which I have worked for for over 25 years, the Suffolk Cultural Arts Center, Suffolk Parks and Rec, the Suffolk Public Library, the Suffolk Art Gallery, and other community entities to foster collaboration and enhance the services that we provide to grow and groom that community. A secondary purpose of the facility is to offer a versatile venue for personal and community celebrations, such as baby showers, birthday parties, retirement dinners, small family gatherings, and ministry events. The center will also host meetings for ministry groups, civic leads, the Veterans Organization, some fraternities, sororities, and other community leaders. Looking ahead, we hope to expand our services offered at the center to open a learning center. That's my retirement dream. This would further our mission of providing educational resources to the community and fostering lifelong learning. The existing building on the property will be primarily used as an event space, but it's important to note that there will be no cooking allowed. All the events must be catered, and the foods will be brought in. For events, we will be providing their own, the tables and the chairs for guests to use. Thank you for considering our vision. We are excited about the potential for Pearls and Bowties Multipurpose Center to contribute to the betterment of our community. Yes, I call it "our" community. I live in the state of North Carolina, but before it was what we're trying to create it to be, it was Carolina cleaners that served Suffolk for over 30 years by no other than the late Roy Branch. And we want to keep that legacy growing, not as a dry cleaners, but to let that community know we care, and we're going to stand, and we're going to stand up and offer them something to grow them, to educate them, and to let them see that we do work as a family, whether I live in North Carolina or whether I live in the city of Suffolk. But as I said before, I am a current employee of Suffolk Public Schools, been there for over 25 years, and I thank you for your time, and we look forward to work with you and making this project a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers. This public hearing is closed. Counsel? Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Williams?
Yes, I move to approve, but just before I get a second, I just want to let the Branch family know that we really appreciate what you're doing. It's something that's needed in the community, and I fully support you, and thank you for your dream.
Got a motion for approval from council member Williams. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
And a second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll move on to our next public hearing, which is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated on property located at 506 East Washington Street, zoning map 34G 25 parentheses two, parcels one and two, account numbers 353487000 and 351051000. This is CUP 2024-15. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. The one action you just took was for the parking facility for the event center. This action will be on the event center, and Meg stands by to answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening again. I stood before you earlier and expressed our vision and shared what we were going to do, so I ask you again to please vote in favor because what you see in this picture is not what we have going on there now. We're going to show that area what we're going to do to grow them, to groom them, and to make... to make them more prevalent in the city of Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone present to speak in opposition? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. Counsel, ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams, Vice Mayor Ward.
Second.
And a second from Vice Mayor Ward. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our final public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facilities use on properties located at 6100 Crittenden Road, zoning map 10, parcel 50, account number 252306000. This is CUP 202422. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council, Assistant Director of Planning, Meg Peddinger, will again provide the staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council, for the last time. This conditional use permit request before you is for a 3-megawatt solar facility at 6100 Crittenden Road. This is located in the Rural Conservation Use District and the Chukatac Borough and is outside the Northern Growth Area. Subject property is zone A agricultural, is approximately 155 acres and consists of agricultural land, vacant agricultural land, wooded wetlands, and an equine boarding facility. The property includes a residential home that the landowner resides in. The energy generating system is designed to occupy approximately 17 acres. The fencing area will occupy about 25 acres. You can see that there is forested land, there's some agricultural land, there are a few small residential houses across the street, and then there's additional agricultural land to the west. The proposed facility is designed to meet all of the minimum setbacks from the adjacent public roads and residential uses. The residents in this particular location are located about 700 feet and about 1,100 feet away from where the facility will be located, which on your exhibit there is in the back and the rear. They won't be disturbing any of the wetlands, and they'll be as far away from the road as you can get and as far away from the residences as you can get. In addition to the setbacks, the residents will also have a 50-foot mature dense vegetation screening buffer along the property lines and also along Crittenden Road to shield the view shed. The fence line in the front is set back about 750 feet from Crittenden Road, so it's pretty far back from the road. Along the western border, fence line is set back about 490 feet from the southwestern property line with Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast. The applicant proposes building a new drive lane off of Crittenden Road for the ingress and egress of the site to avoid impacting the view shed along Crittenden Road of the adjacent residential neighbors, and also to not impact the horse spa farm operations. According to the application, the facility will utilize the passive photovoltaic cells consisting of common materials, including glass, polymer, aluminum, copper, silicone, and semiconductor materials. In addition, Hexagon Energy has been actively engaged with the property's surrounding community, including the Oakland Chukatac Civic League. The property owner is the area where this is being located, and the entire property is not being farmed currently, and so the property owner wanted to find a productive use that would also have a low impact on the land and the surrounding area. The applicant has provided a number of visuals of the proposed landscaping and screening showing the facility's appearance post-development relative to the existing conditions from the public right of way. The images demonstrate the approximate visual impact of the facility from the vantage points along the neighboring properties and roads. Limited amount of tree clearing will happen, and where existing vegetation is not adequate, additional landscape screening buffer will be installed. You can see on these aerials here a photo simulation of what the facility would look like from the air, which hopefully none of us will see it from the air. And again, they submitted a number of photo simulations of what the landscaping would look like at various times from the road. Again, the facility would not be able to be visible from the road. They also, in accordance with the UDO and the supplemental standards, did a noise study. They actually also went out to the property and sampled some of the ambient noise, which they found to be between 37 and 40 decibels at various points during the day, and so the project, what you can see, the project will create will be less than what the ambient noise is. Nonetheless, there is a condition that should the facility exceed the noise that they have shown in their study, that they would have to mitigate that noise upon, you know, a founded complaint by the city. The use itself, you know, while it is underused, will generate very little traffic, you know, less than two trips a month. During construction, which is three to four months, the number of trucks that will come out will be the most, but should be still very limited, so that they have shown the haul route here that the city has looked at and has approved during the construction period to stay on the major roads. Planning Commission at their December 17 meeting did vote six to one to approve this application with the conditions, and I will stand by the conclusion of the public hearing to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing, but the first speaker, please come forward and provide their name and address to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Ward, members of City Council. My name is Esther Reckelman. I come from 321 East Main Street in Charlottesville, Virginia. I'm the senior project developer with Hexagon Energy, representing the Secretariat Solar Project. I want to thank the staff for their thorough presentation and recommendation for approval, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all today. I have very limited time to speak, so I do want to apologize if my cadence picks up a little bit. Hexagon Energy was founded and is headquartered in Charlottesville, Virginia. We have over nine years of experience developing small projects like these in the Commonwealth. It took a great number of people, both at Hexagon as well as outside consultants, to bring together the final product you see in front of you today, and I'm proud to be presenting this project. When we first met the Parker family, they shared their desire to add solar to their property without affecting their equine business, Horse Spa Farm, which they started about 20 years ago on this property. After learning about the property's history, we, together with input from the Parkers, identified a 25-acre area on the 155-acre property that was suitable for development. I'll let Mrs. Parker, who is speaking after me, go into a little bit more background on the property, but in short, the area of our project was at one point farmed. After the original farmer retired in the early 2000s, the Parkers attempted to find someone new to take over, but were not successful in finding someone that was willing to haul their equipment and also aligned with the goals they had in mind. This 25-acre section, which has been fallow for over a decade, is tucked away in a corner of the property, out of view from neighbors and those passing by. The project will benefit the city by generating increased city revenue through both taxes and/or revenue share during the lifetime of the project, and will protect the parcel from more permanent development uses. The energy generated by this facility will be consumed by the community here, right where it's generated, and has the ability to power up to 600 homes. The project is designed to improve the environment, complement the area, and be hidden from view. The solar farm will have no impact on surrounding natural areas or neighbors, and most importantly, allow the equestrian farm to keep operating. Hexagon has engaged with the community from the start. We met with neighbors on Crittenden Road and Kings Highway through door knocking and leaving leaflets at the door of those who are unavailable. The main concern from neighbors was the potential impact on their view shed. If you drive past Crittenden Road or Kings Highway right now, it's virtually impossible to see into the property due to the existing vegetation. Our project's fence line will be over 700 feet away from Crittenden Road and about 500 feet away from the property boundary with Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast. Our project is also guaranteeing that the view shed remains protected by not only ensuring continued existence of the current vegetation, but also supplementing and filling in the gaps to ultimately create a 50-foot landscaping buffer. This will be both on Crittenden Road as well as the southwestern property boundary with Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast. We also met with the Oakland Chukatac Civic League, where we learned that folks wanted to see more concrete benefits to their local community. We learned that the Civic League hosts an annual event called National Night Out that brings together the community every summer, and that it is an event mostly funded by donations from businesses in the area, so we decided to contribute to this year's, I guess I should say, National Night Out event, and we hope to be there in August when it comes around. Additionally, we learned about the Glasshawk Farm addition to Lone Star Lakes Park across the street from the fire station in the area, and how that is an ongoing project with the city's Parks Department, so we would like to make a donation to that effort as well. Lastly, just this past Monday, I met with the Suffolk Peninsula Community Partnership, where the group got to learn more about our project and asked some really thoughtful questions. I know that recently, there's been a lot of frustration about the noise coming from a different project on White Marsh Road, begging the question of how the solar facility will affect its neighbors. I want to emphasize that our project is different in terms of size and equipment placement compared to that other project. The noise generating equipment on our project is over 800 feet away from Crittenden Road and over 1,000 feet away from the nearest residence. Unlike that project, our facility will be utilizing what is called string inverters that are significantly quieter than a central inverter. Our noise study, which we were required to complete based on the Unified Development Ordinance, shows that at the nearest property boundary, which is Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast, the sound generated by our equipment will be only 31 decibels. That's the sound of the quietest room in your house without HVAC on, for context. We're well within the city's noise standards. We have a condition in our application that holds us to the findings of our study, and we can confidently say that this project will not negatively affect anyone in the surrounding area's quality of life. We brought our sound engineer with us today and really encourage you to ask him any questions you might have during the discussion period. Solar electricity generation is a safe technology. These panels are located on houses, schools, hospitals, and buildings all across the country. The project will generate revenue for Suffolk without drawing on city resources such as roads, water and sewer, and schools. The project aligns with Suffolk's long-term goals and comprehensive plan, protects the view shed, and is low-impact to the community. It's an opportunity for the landowner to protect the land from other development uses for decades. The electricity will serve the local community. Planning staff included eight conditions that Hexagon agrees to. We've been working closely with staff since July of 2024, and will continue to work collaboratively with the city on this project, so we respectfully request the conditional use permit approval tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions at the end of this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
My name is Wendy Parker, and my husband, John, and I, we live at 6100 Crittenden Road. We bought the cotton farm there in 2003, and I wanted to build a horse boarding facility close to my parents' house in Chukatac, where they built in the 70s, and where my sisters live now. I was asked to share with you in under three minutes why we believe a small solar farm is the best use of the land for us and how it pairs well with our thriving horse boarding facility. After building our pastures, we were left with this 20 acres in the far back corner. We ran out of money and steam and left it that way. I invited Mo, who a lot of you people know, to grow beans, and he did for three to four years, until he conceded the field to the deer. Then I invited the farming brothers to have a look. They did come, and they said that it was just too small to haul their equipment there, which is totally understandable. In 2017, I was informed out of the blue that my farm no longer qualified for a land-use tax deferral program, resulting in a significant increase in my tax base. No one at the time could explain this, not even to my attorney, but months later, I was advised that all I needed to do was bag my composted horse manure and sell it to the public. I was quite ill at the time, and I didn't have the energy to initiate this new side hustle idea. When I got back on my feet a few years later, I invited a young man eager to trial regenerative farming, which uses sheep, cattle, and chickens in rotation, to try it out on my farm, and I gave him a free three-year lease. But before he could get started, the pandemic arrived, his plans changed. He hooked up with a private equity guy in New York, and instead of arriving with a little bit of animals we were going to have, he showed up with two large stock trailers and 18 head of piney woods cattle, which shortly became 26 head of cattle. I spent the next three years scouting for patches of grass all over my property, and I can tell you that this venture did not go well for me, and we ended our arrangement. In the meantime, I had been reading about solar energy or farming as an option, and I responded to a letter from Esther Reckelman at Hexagon Energy, based in Virginia. She really listened to me, what I wanted to do, and Secretariat Solar was the result. I wanted to utilize the farmland in a way that did not annoy my neighbors in any way and also did not want to impact on my border sense of peace and quiet when they spend their time at Horse Spa Farm with their horses. The added bonus is that Secretariat Solar will be enrolled in the Dominion Energy's shared solar program, as Esther has already explained. Thank you.
Okay. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. We've got a little over a minute. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor?
My name is Peter Bylobreski. I live at 4423 Cherokee Drive, across the street from the mayor, but don't hold that against me. I really knew the Parker family from way back in 1996, when I moved in next door to Wendy Parker's father, and I was a witness to a lot of the things that she talked about, trying to develop this land. She really wanted to be someone who gives back to the environment, protects it, and she wanted to also have the horses. And I got drug into the project with her dad to put up some of the first sheds. And Wendy is very finicky and sincere in what she wants to do. When we would be out there building, we could not drop a nail because a horse might swallow it. She is very meticulous, and you can, from her testimony and the testimony of the contractor, how much they've gone through to try and do this project without having any conflict with the neighbors or the environment. And you got to see, this is a little bit different than some of the projects you've seen. She lives on the property. This really is in her backyard. Would somebody do something ridiculous in your own backyard? You can see she's done world, along with the contractor, to make sure this doesn't happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the time for opponents. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for your time. Neither here to speak for or against this project, amazingly. I am happy to hear that there's been certain conditions now forthput in these new conditional use permits.
Excuse me, sir, can we have your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Shane Alexander, 1800 White Marsh Road.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to see the grant of use of conditional permits is now including the noise abatement. Also, I just want to speak to and be an advocate for maybe those residents that are nearby of this proposed field. I see with a 3-megawatt versus the 5-megawatt that I live next to, it's still a substantial solar field. The inverters have been told that they are the quieter version. That I can't speak to because I don't know. They did bring a sound guy here. Feel free to ask him all the questions you want. It sounds like they have done their homework, and it sounds like what we've done in the past and spoken in the past has now trickled its way forward, which I'm very happy to see, and is now being kind of, you know, you can obviously tell they did their homework. My guidance is just that the residents are well-informed there nearby, and, you know, these things often include an environmental impact survey. They don't ever include something like a citizen impact survey. I want to see that the... I want to see that the solar company has made, not only by leaving a flyer on somebody's door, but made personal contact and that they get that personal contact and approval, and that these people understand the adverse potential health effects that these have are making cause, including the noise and site buffering. With site buffering, I want hopefully that part of their permit or plan is to include fast-growing implements of trees and not just tiny shrubs that are going to take 20 years to produce three feet. Also, just want to make sure that, like I said, from a resident's standpoint, that those residents are very well-informed that are nearby and have made contact, have spoken with these people, and that there is a direct line of communication that any of those residents nearby, especially at Bed and Breakfast, would have for a point of contact where they can actually get a person directly with the company and voice their concerns back and forth and not have to go through, you know, City Council and all these other avenues to try to get their personal problems solved with anything that may or may not be proposed. With that said, it is still my opinion that, yes, this is a small piece of farmland. We also own a small piece of farmland, less than 30 acres. It is going to be dormant this year because we are going over all the possibilities for the land use, but it's still my thorough conviction that with the reduction of farmland, that all farmland should be farmland, and it should be at any time useful for said use by either agriculture products or livestock. And if not, then they should look at rezoning. Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition.
My name is Tiffany Alexander. I'm at 1800 White Marsh Road. I'm trying not to get emotional about it because it does bother me. I'm very impressed with this lady's introduction to this and that there is a whole lot more being looked into, these different solar panels, as my husband said, but I'll forever be against them from what I've had to deal with health-wise personally and how it has changed our life dramatically of the one that's across from us. So it's something that I can never, ever agree with. I just, I can't. It's just not one of those things. But many of you have listened to our story before. The last year and a half, two years, my health has declined. We've had a significant amount of things happening around our property as far as environmental things. We have seen a decline in our dragonflies. We've seen a massive decline in our bats. We've seen a massive decline in our hummingbirds. Our animals no longer want to lay near certain windows of our house mainly because of the sounds that we're having to deal with. Solar panels and inverters are not quiet. I have yet to be convinced of that because we still haven't found a solution for the one that's across from us, and before any others are approved or put anywhere, I think that things need to be taken care of and pretty much figured out from the mistakes of this one. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition.
My name is Santiago Banzo. I reside in Kissimmee, Florida, 1914 Bruce Street, and the reason I'm here is because I'm totally against this. We bought a land, 1057 lot next to him, and planning on building a house, bring my kids here, and with this, I'm like, I'm against it totally. So I don't know what else to say. Can't build my house now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker to speak in opposition.
My name is Benjamin on 6513 Crittendon Road. I don't like anything close to my house. What in general say, we buy the 40 acres right there. We try to build my son's house in there down the future, and whatever the lady say, she went to on Critten Road, knock the door, doctor door, I never hear anything. We have four neighbors right around the house. We never hear. This is the first time we hear this thing. We never receive no papers in the house. They're going to build something. They're going to do anything close to our house. It's okay if you build anything there, but one of these days, I come from Newport News 10 years ago, moved over here, and now it's going to be a city, solid panels around our house, and everything's going to ruin. And again, it's good, but I can't build anything way over there. It's fine. So that's all I can say. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. We have our next speaker pleased to speak in opposition to this ordinance.
Hello, everybody. I've got to get my glasses. Back in December, I heard about this hearing, a public hearing, and I was against it, and I'm still against it.
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry. My name is Nunzia Misere. I live in Chuckatack, 4035 Michael Drive. I'm a restauranter. I think I've been feeding everybody here for over 12 years. Anyways, they say that it's only at Crittendon, but I believe that the sign say it needs to be rezoned is also on Kings Highway, so it's in a corner, and there's a lot of homes over there. And I live, I pass through there every day to go back and forth to work, and I really do not, don't like to see something there like a solar panel. Even they say that it's been covered with trees. I'm sure that the noise is going to be there, and I believe some radiation should be there. And I don't think it's good for homes around it and people like that, you know, who wants to build some houses and, you know, they buy a land and now that even the property, I think, is going to go down in value if they, if you guys approve these conditional use permits. So I believe it's not, it's not a very good idea. Chuckatack is growing a lot. It's a nice little community with beautiful homes. Everybody got a home, a nice home that is over half a million dollars, and if something like this would happen, I'm afraid everybody, even me, you know, the decrease in value and besides also, how do they distribute this power? They're going to have towers, and that's going to create current, right? How do they get this power from the ground and take it? They're going to have towers, if I'm not mistaken. So, and I'm against it because the towers and everything here could create a problem with the environment. There is people with kids, there is animals, there is people that passing through, and it's something that I don't think it's something that we need in Chuckatack. I've been in Chuckatack for five years and love it. Nice, beautiful neighborhood, good people. I cannot ask better than that, but now this happening and it's just, it's like somebody stabbed me in my back. Just every time I pass in, I see the rezoning sign over there, I get cramps on my stomach. I'm sorry. This is the way I express myself. I have to use my hands, and I just want you to deny this conditional use permit. I'm sorry about the lady that she's trying to sell the owner of the land. She would probably put it for sale and get some money out of it, but I think it's wrong to have an electrical power panel establishment right in the middle of Chuckatack. Okay? I think I'm finished. Thank you for listening to me, and thank you for this meeting, and I hope I said what, everything that, I didn't make any mistakes, right? Even though with my broken accent. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition to this ordinance.
I'm Jason Plankarte. I live at 6513 Critten Road. My first, well, it's not really a problem with like everything going on, but just I feel like we weren't really informed properly. None of my neighbors, everybody sitting around me, is like, they have spoken, they have broken Spanish, so they wouldn't understand 100%, but they would like to say things like, they weren't really informed, and they just want more information about this like solar panel around their house. Thank you.
We have our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition at this time? If not, we have a five-minute rebuttal period.
Good evening again. I took notes. I'm going to try to hit as many points as possible that folks were concerned about. In regards to the Alexanders who come and spoke, I want to thank them for coming to speak. I sincerely empathize with what they're going through, and I think that, you know, you can tell that for this project, it's like comparing apples and oranges. The project next to their home, it's 150 acres, I believe, 15 megawatts. It's way too close to their home. I agree with that. We were held to a totally different set of standards. We're hundreds of feet away from, I mean, over 1,000 feet away from any residential neighbor. We're 500 feet away from the nearest property boundary with Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast. And so I feel confident when I say that neighbors won't be able to see this project, won't be able to hear this project, and even more so, the city has stepped up and put this condition in our conditional use permit that if we do go over those sound limits that we had in our sound study, we will have to remediate the situation and fix it within a certain period of time. As far as farmland being removed out of farmland, I think the landowner spoke really well to that point. You know, I think she tried really hard to use those 30 acres of land for some sort of farming. It just didn't work out, and I think she really doesn't want to sell the property. I mean, she loves her horses. She wants to keep running the business. I think you can all agree that it's not a cheap business to continue operating, but this is something that she loves to do, and this is just a complimentary use on her property that's not going to affect the neighbors. As far as the folks that didn't get any information from us who live on Crittendon Road, I do want to apologize, and I would love to speak with them and provide them with more information to be entirely candid with how far our outreach went. We knocked on the doors essentially of everyone who you see on your screen right now. So if there were, if there were doors to knock on, and if there weren't, we just sent a piece of mail with my phone number, my email. But I did knock on the doors of all of the folks who live immediately across the street on Crittendon Road and immediately across the street on Kings Highway. A lot of those folks did eventually, because we didn't knock just one time. We went, we came a few times. Eventually, I was able to find them at their home. We spoke for a little while, and for those that never ended up being home, I did leave flyers with my, a map of the project, a little bit more information about the project, and my contact information to reach out to me as well. And then as far as the radiation that the gentleman was speaking about, solar facilities, they emit just about as much radiation as your household appliances do, so you standing next to your refrigerator will emit as much radiation as you standing next to a solar facility. So I really don't believe that that should be a health, that is a health concern. We will not be putting up new power lines. Actually, one of the reasons we chose this property and really like it is because there are power lines that run up and down Crittendon Road, and they're actually on an easement on our landowner's property, and we're connecting to those power lines that eventually run down Crittendon Road and connect back to the Dominion Energy Substation down Crittendon Road. So that was really one of the great pieces of the project is that we don't have to build any new power lines. They're there for us to use. And then I think that that should cover most of it. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I really think that this project, it should not affect any of the neighbors. It will remain within those 25 acres that you see pictured on your screen. The reason the sign was on Kings Highway is because we needed to show signage based on city guidelines, both on Crittendon Road and on Kings Highway, so that anybody passing by was made aware of this conditional use permit hearing and request. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We have about a minute and a half left in the rebuttal period. If anyone else would like to speak, we've got a minute and a half left of rebuttal time. Do we have any other speakers? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions, comments, or a motion? Counsel member Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot to say, so buckle up. You all know from, if you've heard me on city council meetings before, that I am not a fan of solar facilities. I have worked very hard with our Ag Advisory Committee to try to limit the amount of solar in the city of Suffolk. After the approval of the facility on White Marsh, we made, which was when I had first come on council, and I regret that that facility was put in the way it was, but as a result of that, unfortunately, at the expense of the neighbors, we made, we made very significant changes to our solar ordinance and the conditional use permit. We increased the vegetative buffers. We increased the distance between the facilities and residences. We, what else did we do? We just, we put a number of limitations to try to make these a better fit for the city of Suffolk, and one of the key components of this is we put in a 1% cap, 1% of the productive farmland in the city. I wanted a half percent cap. If we had had a half percent cap, we could be not talking about solar anymore, but we have a 1% cap, which is positive, and I think that was a great step in the right direction. Did we get the ordinance perfect? No. Do we need to continue to make changes and strengthen the ordinance? Yes. I think we all understand that we need to increase the amount of noise mitigation that we do. You know, maybe we should lower the cap. Maybe we should not have solar facilities in the city of Suffolk. Not every locality does. So we need to be vigilant about continuing to look at this ordinance and how it impacts our city and our citizens. And I think to the Alexander's point that having a citizen impact study is an excellent part to add to the ordinance because I think that a new use in a neighborhood should not have a negative impact on the existing folks in the neighborhood. I have concerns about solar. Nobody has ever explained to me how it's going to be decommissioned. The financial side of it is a mystery, so I will stand on the fact that I am not a fan. However, we have made these changes to our solar ordinances in good ways and for good reasons, and I think that this particular project has met and exceeded the current requirements of our ordinances. I think with a few exceptions, the nearest neighbors were given ample opportunities to ask questions, to speak, and I've actually gotten, I'm not going to count this right, four or five of the nearest neighbors who have called me in support of this project. The folks at Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast are good friends of mine. They have no problem with it. The parcel that's affected, the 25 acres of 17 of panels, is not currently being actively farmed. I farm in that neighborhood, and the deer pressure is intense and difficult to manage, and especially the smaller the field and the more surrounded by wooded areas that it is, the more difficult it is to grow crop. So I appreciate the struggles of trying to actively farm it and not being successful with that. So we're not taking in, I mourn the loss of every acre of farmland. I honestly do, but I don't think that this qualifies. But I don't think that this qualifies as a really high-quality piece of agricultural land. This project is a very small footprint. I think the question of noise has been addressed and it's going to be the city's job to do our due diligence and make sure that the ordinances are enforced and, and adhered to. Again, I think the public outreach to the neighbors has been exceptional. And I think, so this is my neighborhood. You drive down Crittenton Road or King's Highway, you cannot see the parcel where these panels are going to be. You can't currently see it from the road. And with additional buffering, you're, you're not, you're not going to be able to see it in the future. I mean, you literally cannot see it from the road. You, you really can't see the horse spa much. I, I would like to see the horses more, but the, you know, there's really a, a tree line along Crittenton Road that, you know, you know there's horses over there, but it's, it's really not very visible. So I, I think the view shed protection is really basically already in place. So, so we have a city have, we've been on a learning curve with this new technology with solar energy. And again, I, I, I still have a lot of questions. I still have concerns. I absolutely do not support the very large-scale projects. I think these smaller neighborhood projects are more palatable. And again, we set a whole standard of rules governing solar in the city of Suffolk. And I think this project has adhered to all of the ordinances that we have asked them to adhere to and then some. So with that, I do, I, I hope that, that you all will be in touch with the folks here that don't feel like they have gotten a, a fair amount of information, what the impact is going to be. I, I think the, the nearest neighbor I know is Meadowbrook, but the other residences, how many feet are we from any other residences?
Uh, excuse me, so on the southern side essentially?
On any side, which, if you go any direction.
So as far as the nearest residence anywhere outside of Meadowbrook, it's, it's over 1,500 feet away. The nearest residence, I believe, so it's right across the street on Crittenton Road is James Robinson Home for Boys. So there's, it's a, it's a farm field. And then right to the left of that, I've met with that neighbor, they are over 1,500 feet away from the fence line. And then to the south, you can't even see it on the screen, but past that farm field, there are some residences. Those are also over 1,000 feet away from the fence line.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. So with that, getting all that off my chest and thank you all for listening, again, still not a cheerleader for solar, but I think in this instance, all the Ts have been crossed and the Is have been dotted. And with that, I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, thank you. We got a motion for approval from council member Butler Barlow. Council member Wright.
I have a question, sir. So I agree with everything that council member Butler Barlow shared, but I do have a question for Ms. Reckelman. There is a required, a requirement to mitigate the noise. Is an outline as to what that looks like? What is the timeframe that you have if a resident has an issue with noise? And what is the process to get that mitigated?
Thank you for the question. So I believe the way that the condition is written, and I would ask staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but the way the condition is currently outlined is that we have to follow the noise standards outlined in the noise study. If, for whatever reason, we exceed the noise levels in the noise study, that is when the mitigation requirement kicks in, once the city lets us know that we are going outside of those limits. I believe in the condition, it might, it says within 30 days we have to mitigate. I believe that is what the condition says. If it does not say so, I, I, we can add, we're happy to add that in there. I, I'm happy to speak more as to what mitigation looks like. I have a sound engineer here, but I don't know if that was your question or it was more related to just timeline.
It was more related to the timeline and the process to ensure that the quality of life for the people around have a, an avenue to get things mitigated in a timely manner.
And I, the staff might come up and have a better response as well for timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so the way that the condition is written, it says, if at any time upon commencement of the use of the property, the city finds that the noise, noise level associated with the use exceeds the representations in the noise study, that they, we will notify the applicant of the violation of the conditions of the, of the conditional use permit, and the applicant shall at its own expense take, take appropriate action to bring the noise level, level into compliance with what's in their sound study. So not just the UDO, but what's in their sound study within 30 days.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. On the residents that came up that owns property next, adjacent to this, that they are getting ready to build houses or were going to build houses, is that being taken into consideration of the distance and the noise with the surrounding properties that's adjacent to this?
Thank you for the question. I am not quite sure exactly where that gentleman is planning to build a home, how close adjacent to the property it is. As far as noise goes, pardon.
Now it's stuck. I was going to try and get you back to the noise exhibit.
That would be, if we, I guess it is stuck, but anyway. I'm not sure exactly where that gentleman will be building their home. I did not know about that, but if it is anywhere, if it is on any of the properties that are directly touching our property, we did send a letter to the landowners that were listed on the Suffolk, oh, we did send a letter to any, to the landowners that were listed on the Suffolk City GIS as the landowners to let them know about this project. So I, I'm not sure where in that process that gentleman might have purchased the property or decided that they wanted to build a home. We were not aware of that at the time. What I will say is that, as I've said, the, the loudest the project gets at the nearest property boundaries is 31 decibels, and it should not exceed that for any of the, of the surrounding neighbors as well. And I hope that if we can get to the, yeah, if we can get to the sound study, we can actually get to see what the decibel levels will be, not just at the property boundary for Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast, but also for all the other property boundaries. But I guess to answer your question, we did not take that into account because we did not know that the gentleman was building a home there. And we did send out information to anybody who was living directly adjacent to the property. However, I, I do feel confident to say that even if they are building a home on that property boundary, they will also not be able to see the property, the project, and they will not be able to hear it either, just based on the location of the noise generating equipment.
Okay, thank you. I would just like the person that was saying they're getting ready to build a home adjacent to that, would you come and tell me how close your property, uh, home will be built to the property line of solar farm?
Thank you for your question. Well, we are for, for honors right there. Property, as in Mark Construction, that's the company. We invest the money right there and we make a plan, make it in the future, three or four houses in there. So I don't know if you're going to build houses in there, because we pretty much neighbors from, this is 1076, the property. And that's the future houses. I don't know, next year, when you have some money. I don't know if it's going to be possible. I don't want to be near close, because right now it's going to build solid panels right now, and in the future you're going to stand it. And maybe the neighbors and other neighbors, they want to. Because according to the company, Mark Construction, they, they contact, her contact the, the company if they want to put solid panels in their 40 acres too. So that's going to be down. It's going to be down in the future. Whatever the other gentleman is going to say, they say, whatever Marshall. In 10 years, it's going to be all around the houses. I remember on, in Crocker, Critten, Crocker, Critten Farm, I mean, two years ago, same lady, same company, they tried to do solid panels, that's 35 acres, and all the neighbors in Chak-Tuck, they signed and denied. So I hope, I hope it can build a house down in the future. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Should I come show you where the, where I believe, based on this gentleman's comments, the, the property will be? The gentleman mentioned that we tried to develop a solar facility in the area a few years ago. Hexagon has never put in application, as far as I know, in Suffolk before. That might have been someone else. But as far as Mark Construction, it is directly to the right of those blue wetlands that you see, that large area of wetlands. It's directly to the right of that. And so what I would say is that the, the real benefit actually in this project, that those, that massive area of wetlands exists, it's currently like full of trees. And I, I know that some folks hunt in there. We're not touching those, those 40-plus acres of trees. And so that gentleman will actually have a very natural, very long, wide vegetative buffer that's going to remain there for the lifetime of the project to separate him from our solar facility. And then I don't know if this will work or not, but we did at one point have the sound slide up. And I can assure you that the sound levels will be even lower than 30 decibels at that gentleman's property boundary.
Thank you. Council member Johnson.
Ms. Reckelman, I'd like to applaud you for taking all of the rules that we put in place and abide by them and putting forth a project that Councilwoman Barlow could agree with. That was a tough nut, I'm telling you. She didn't want to. I don't want to speak out of school. I'm not quite as easy. I'll tell you what my problem is. And it's not because of you guys. You've done exactly what you asked, but from my perspective and what I'd like to see happen in this city, that we go back and review all of these things. And that we maybe decide that we're going to be like other cities in the area, maybe like Virginia Beach or cities that don't allow solar farms. Simply from the standpoint that we live in one of the most beautiful agricultural cities. And I don't want to do anything to hurt the Parkers, because I understand exactly where you are and what you're trying to do. But I, I'm having a hard time agreeing to a project that the company that's putting this forth has only been in business nine years. 30 years from now, 20 years from now, most businesses don't stay in business that long, but 30 years from now, when we're ready to knock this thing down, I'm not convinced that we can. I know that's what the state says and that's what everybody's saying, but I am not convinced. My 10 years of experience with solar, which is not great, has not been good. I can be perfectly honest with you, it's not been good. But yet what I see from the public as we move into times where people are trying to generate the best income from the land and make their lives easier and do things down the road, you're going to see more and more people try to do this. So we, as a city, have got to face the hard, cool facts here that we put plans and we put things in place to try to mitigate all of these things, but we're failing. We have not mitigated it yet. And I'm hoping eventually we might get it right, but I don't, I'm not ready for that. I'm sorry, and I'm sorry to the Parkers, because I cannot support this. But I'd have a difficult time right now supporting solar from the standpoint that I have not, I'm not pleased with what's gone forth so far. So maybe somebody will convince me at some point, but I'm not quite there yet. So that's, that's all I want to say. I don't want to do anything. Ms. Barlow's a good council person. We're all good council people and we all have our opinion. But for me, I'm, I'm just not ready. I'm sorry. That's all I'll say.
Counsel, do we have any? Counsel member Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Reckelman, can you ask this sound guy or gal to come to the podium, please? Sound guy, sound guy.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm assuming that you've been listening to all these arguments about the sound levels and whatnot. One of the things that kind of has struck me about particularly when I went out to the solar farm on White Marsh Road is that a lot of times it's not the decibel level, it's the pitch, the frequency, the constancy of the sound. So when you do these sound studies, do you just go out there with something that generates the 30-some decibels and see how far away it gets? But I, I know that these electronic equipments they put out, it's not, you know, that kind of sound, but it's a bzzzz. So do you have a way to measure that, to regulate that, to find out how far that is traveling and, and what potential impact that might be having?
Yeah, if I could, I'd like to walk you through the work we've done, which will answer some of your questions, but I think it will give you a better picture. So to start the project off, what we do-
Excuse me, sir, do you mind identifying yourself?
Yes. Apologies. I was here last month, so I forgot. My name is Bill Yoder. I'm a principal with Ascendec. We're an acoustical consulting firm. I've been around for about 70 years. And I'm based out of Charlottesville, Virginia. And, okay, so we started off the project with doing an ambient noise study, which means we place sound level meters around the property to get an idea of how loud the, the site is before any sort of work gets done, any project work. So what that does is it captures the, the ambient sound level, so it's like the background sound level that never disappears. It captures the average sound levels, which are the sound levels that are there because there's aircraft and there's, there's two roads there and they're, they're heavily trafficked by trucks. So it's, it can get quite loud. And we, we take that and compare it to, say, a, a sort of a, a review of what the, the ordinance is. So the Suffolk City has, has, has an ordinance that states that the daytime sound level for a project can't exceed 60 dBa, nighttime for a project can't exceed 50 dBa. Well, also in your ordinance is what's called a tonal penalty, which applies a 5 dB penalty to sounds that are tonal, which exactly gets to your point. How can you account for sounds that have a constant pitch or frequency or tone? That would be a whistle or a hum or something that's just sort of incessant, what people consider annoying, right? And that penalty would be applied to this project, because the, the piece of, pieces of equipment that are in use are inverters and transformers. Solar panels themselves don't actually create any noise. It's, it's the supporting equipment that generates the electricity that does. And they are considered tonal. And so, you know, in reviewing this, we're not comparing the sound level of the, the predicted sound level of the equipment to just the standard sound level limits. We're comparing to the sound level limits minus another 5 dB for that penalty. So you've accounted for that. Your next question is, is how do we, how do we do this, this prediction? Do we go out there with the equipment and generate a bunch of noise and see how far it travels? We don't actually do that. We use computer modeling. So it follows an international standard for the propagation of noise. And we can do is, in our computer model, plug in all of the noise sources, plug in topography, land covering. If we wanted to, vegetation, we don't typically do that, because vegetation doesn't work as well for, for reducing sound. So it's a little more conservative, because we do have some, some vegetation on the site that will provide some sound mitigation. We're not accounting for that in the study. So the, the sound levels may be even a little lower than what we said. And to, with, with those predictions, we're able to generate a slide. Let's see if I can get to it. Are you, is it possible to go to the next slide? Slide 35? It's not 35. I thought it was.
Yeah, trying to go back.
Yeah. Maybe it's before this.
No, I got you.
Oh, there it is. You got it. Thank you. Okay, so on, on this slide, what you're seeing on the bottom right is the project that you've seen on the other slides with bands of color moving around it. These are decibel level bands, which show you the predicted sound level. So the, the furthest band of color is light blue, that's 25, I think, no, 20 dBa. So it's, it's quite low. And to give you some perspective here, the sound level predicted from the project at all property boundaries is what? As high as it can be at all property boundaries is 35, I'll tell you what. I've got the report. I can't see it on my screen here. So, let's see. So there's a, there's a purple line that's 30 dBa. That pretty much stays within the, the property boundary. And that's really low. You know, as Esther said earlier, that's the quietest room in your house. And to, to put some, some more numbers on this for you about how loud this is, the ambient study- ambient study during the day, the, the ambient levels that are always there, they're not related to, to car passbys and, and traffic in the air, right? The level that's always there, thirty-seven dBA. So the sound level produced by this at all property boundaries is, is predicted to be lower than the ambient, like the absolute lowest ambient sound level during the day. So it's quite a bit lower. I mean, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, like, even measuring this for compliance purposes is going to be difficult. I don't know, I don't know how, honestly, how the city will do it. Because if you make a measurement without it, without the project and with the project, it's probably going to be the same. Because sound is logarithmic. You can't add thirty-one from the project plus the thirty-seven that's already there. Doesn't become, what is that, sixty-eight, right? It's still going to be, it's still going to be thirty-six or thirty-seven. So I, I think you've got a, a really, a really restrictive goal here. And, and you've got an applicant that's, that's willing to, to meet that goal. And so honestly, I, I think this is a really good project with respect to sound. And I can't speak to the other parts, that's not my specialty, but... Did I answer your question?
Well, I, I think you did. And I'm, you know, it, it just gets concerning when, you know, particularly going to, and I realize we're comparing an apple to an orange, which is not really fair. But, you know, when you go down to White Marsh Road and stand there, the noise is not overpowering, but it's just sort of the constancy. And like I say, the, the pitch that it's coming into you and, and, I mean, I don't know whether evolution, you know, our brains just aren't assimilated to really accepting that kind of sound as opposed to, you know, o- other kind of sounds that, you know, basically we've been around for thousands of years.
So to your point, coming back to this, this tonal sound, yeah, that, that's a well-known phenomenon. Annoyance comes from, from constant pitch sounds. And the, the reason is, is that it's, it's distracting, like it's what we call coherent noise, right? It's super distracting, and your brain is really good at picking out sound in the presence of other sound. So if, if I tell you right now that the sound level will likely not increase, that doesn't mean you're not going to hear it. Like, that's just the nature of life. You know, if someone, someone listening with the intent to hear it will likely hear it. Someone, someone listening, not listening with the intent to hear it is likely not going to hear it. It's, it just comes down to, like, there's a lot of, a lot of transient noise here. So, yeah, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. One final question. The tonal sound that these string inverters that are going to be put into this project, is there a termination limit as to how far that sound will travel?
Oh, well, it's not going to, it's not going to stop traveling, you know, it'll just get quieter and quieter. So the, the idea of, you know, it's never, it's never going to stop. I don't know how else to explain that. But if, if we look at it from the perspective of sound propagation over distance, you lose roughly sixty dB per doubling of distance. And so as you, right now, if you just pick one of those string inverters, of which there are roughly twenty, suppose you're standing next to it and you move twice as far away, it's going to go down six. You move, so, so that's, suppose that's twenty feet. You move to forty feet, it's going to go down another sixty dB. You move to eighty feet, it's another sixty dB lower. So that just keeps decreasing. And there's a point in which it doesn't matter anymore, right? Because you're so far below the ambient sound level, the sound level that, that just exists in the environment.
Well, I, I guess, to continue that train of thought, how far away from these inverters does it become insignificant?
Insignificant. So there are a significant number of them, like I said, about twenty. They are not the most significant source of noise on the site, the transformer is. It's further away. It's, let's see, there's a, sort of, the, the smallest circle there is actually around the transformer. It's, what color is that? Yellow? There's a little red cross in the center of that circle, that's the transformer. That's the loudest thing. And if, if any sort of mitigation were to take place here, likely it's going to be around that. It's not going to be around the string inverters. So if you look close to this picture, there's a bunch of other little red crosses, and those are the, the string inverters. You know, and that's not necessarily where they're going to be, but they're not the dominant source of noise either, that, that transformer is. And we know that that's going to be where it is.
All right. Thank you very much for that primer on sound and traveling and whatnot. You know, one thing, Mr. Mayor, about these solar farm applications or whatnot, they're very much like snowflakes. No two are exactly alike. And I have to agree a little bit with Councilmember Barlow, that I, I think this one is tucked far enough away, back into a corner with enough vegetation around it, and is of such a size that a lot of the problems that we're seeing with some of these other solar farms, I don't think are going to necessarily manifest themselves with this particular project. And I would encourage the city to continue to look at the ordinance as we learn more and more about these projects.
Council, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll interject my thoughts on this. And I believe we just have, we have a motion on the floor for approval, but I don't think we have a second yet, so we'll keep that in mind. That's where we are. Listening to everyone's comments to Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Rector, and everyone who has chimed in, I think Councilmember Rector said it best, you know, I like your analogy, solar facilities are like snowflakes, there's not two of them, there are not two of them that are the same. They are very unique in nature compared to a lot of the other land use issues that we have to make decisions on. You know, a solar farm can be okay here, but a half a mile or a quarter mile down the road, it may not be okay. And very seldom are other uses similar to that. I mean, if we're approving a convenience store, or an office building, or whatever, it's usually over a wide swath of, of land area. A lot of the decisions are based on infrastructure, schools, that never comes into effect as far as solar farms are concerned. It's, it boils down to two things. You know, basically, location and appearance. As a city, not only with solar farms, but warehousing as well, I mean, we have learned, sometimes it's been a difficult lesson, but when solar farms, when there, there began to be a proliferation of solar farms five or six years ago, it was something new. We had, like other cities, citizens limited ordinances currently on the books to regulate solar farms, because nobody ever did one. So with the incentives and the economy and all the other factors that you want to factor in, and I think it's, I think if you feel like that solar farms are going to go away, then you're just kind of putting your head in the sand. I don't think that's going to be the case, based on everything that I am reading, based on the fact that there are, there was a, a bill that could have been introduced last year that would mandate that localities set aside four percent of their total land mass for solar use. Now, to put that into perspective, that's about one thousand times more than we've got right now. I mean, it would be insane if we got hit with that. So over time, though, what we've had to do is learn by our mistakes. And that's, and I say mistakes, it's not anything that anybody can see, because without experience, it's hard to gauge what you may need and what you may not need. Now, this, the, we're getting a lot better at it, just like we did with warehouses. We have put so many more things in, in place, restrictions in places. I mean, in regards to what Councilmember Butler Barlow said, even, you know, warehouses, we get noise, we get times of operation, we get buffers, we get setbacks, we get so many things that we put in, traffic plans, you name it. So we, we're doing the same thing with solar also. Well, this last project on White Marsh Road brought up the fact that we need to address the noise end of it, because it's not typical. It's not a matter of decibels. It's not a matter of two pots clanging together, or somebody running a jackhammer. It's a humming in your ear. Your neighbor can't hear it, but you can sure hear it. And it sure is aggravating. And it sure does affect your quality of life, which is what we're finding out on, on White Marsh. So within our ordinances, we need to be able to address these other sounds that are being emitted by inverters. And I've come to learn that there are different types of inverters, or different brands of inverters. I think inverters are kind of, you know, you can get the cheap ones, you can get the expensive ones, you can get the ones that are hooked up to three megawatts, or five, or whatever it is, they're all kind of a different animal. But we have to have something in place other than strictly the decibel level that we have. So to that point, and all the other things in regards to this project, and, and I want to commend the applicant for their efforts in engaging the community, engaging the council. Ms. Reckelman told, I know we probably talked a year ago, I don't, it's been a while. And she just reached out to me and said, you know, who do I need to talk to? We want to be proactive. We want to make sure that, you know, we speak to the neighbors, and I gave them the list, call this group, call that group, call this group, explain to them what you've got. I was also attended a civic league meeting. Councilmember Butler Barlow was there also, and most of the city, well, pretty much all the city. Couple of them had questions, but nobody really had an objection to it. Where it is is a, a prime factor in whether it can be seen, and that's what it's about, location. It's about location, it's about noise, it's about sight. And I also go by there all the time, and also live in Chalkington, very familiar. And you're exactly right. I don't think you'll see anything. When I look at the, the folks that are building the homes, you know, their home is separated by a huge swath of land, which if that's all wetlands, that's not going away. I mean, that's going to be a natural buffer for a long time. But most importantly is this sound study. And this is the type of thing that we need to incorporate into our ordinance. This was volunteered by the applicant. It's a six or seven-page sound study that talks about more than decibels. It talks about the different types of sound, whether it's, you know, tonal sounds, decibel levels, and addresses octave bands and that sort of thing. The diagram that's up there, if that's accurate, pretty much answers the question as to whether you're going to be able to hear it or not. Because you start with the red, you go to the green, and you go to the white, and you go to the purple. And the purple, if I'm not mistaken, within the study, in reviewing the sound contour map, the, the purple part is thirty decibels. The thirty-decibel contour is almost completely within the property boundary. So to put that into perspective, residential areas are allowed to have R136, R231. So literally, it could be right inside almost a residential neighborhood and still be within the guideline, if that study is correct. And for all practical purposes, I guess we need to assume that it is. So my recommendation moving forward, when we look at solar applications, is not only what do they look like, but, you know, we, we have come to learn that this is a different type of sound. This is humming in one's ear. So I believe this type of study needs to be required on any solar facility that's adjacent to any residential neighborhood, because it'll address and it will fix what we're talking about. Now, we don't have that ordinance on the books right now. However, within the conditional use permit itself, the applicant has done it on their own. Most of them say, we'll adhere to your sound ordinance. Well, if I'm reading this correctly, it says, "The use shall," and in legal feet, shall means that's going to happen, right? There we go, again, a head shake. That means you have to, not may. May doesn't count. Shall means you got to do it. "The use shall at all times shall be in conformance with the maximum noise output levels shown in the document titled 'Sound Study, Secretary at Solar LLC.'" So this is over and above what would be required within our own ordinance. And basically does for this project what we probably need to have within our own ordinance moving forward. So with all that said, and the comments that have been made, and the fact of, you know, where it is, how small it is, neighbors don't have a problem with it, et cetera, et cetera, I too will lend my support to this project. And I'm just like Councilmember Butler Barlow, I'm unenamored with solar farms either, but it's a use that we should consider, and we should be willing to move forward with those applications that not only, that satisfy all the requirements that we have, and we are reasonably insured that we're not going to affect anybody else's quality of life. And it's, and it's going to be an issue that, it's going to be a decision that we can live with in the future. So, once again, we have a motion for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow, but we do not, at this time, have a second. Councilmember Bennett?
Yeah, I will go ahead and second the motion. After the discussion is showing the sound area and the effective area that it's playing, I can really feel a little bit safer with the residence property that's adjacent to this, to go ahead and, uh, second the motion.
Okay, we got a second from Councilmember Bennett. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Johnson voting in opposition.
Okay. And I have successfully lost my place. Give me a minute. Where was I? I think that was our last. We're going to a public hearing. Hold on a second. I'm going as fast as my little fingers will carry me. Okay, we're finished with our public hearings. We do have no resolutions this evening, no staff reports this evening. We do have a motion to hold a public hearing on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, for considering the adoption of an ordinance to amend Section twenty-six dash four of the Code of the City of Suffolk, to amend the polling places for the White Marsh Southside, Airport, and Lakeside precincts. And a motion would be in order. What is the pleasure of Council? Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Move. We got a motion for approval from Councilman Williams, Councilmember Johnson.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Johnson. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, kindly record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for February fifth, twenty twenty-five, at four PM, unless canceled by the mayor and city manager. The motion would be in order. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Move to approve.
A motion for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Williams?
Second, ma'am.
Second from Councilman Williams. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, kindly record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to non-agenda speakers, Madam Clerk. Do we have any non-agenda speakers? If necessary, please explain the guidelines.
We have no non-agenda speakers this evening, Mayor.
All righty. And we will now move to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
We have one addition to this evening's agenda. The nomination, a motion would be required at this time to nominate and appoint a Marie Baker to the Early Childhood Development Commission as the center-based childcare representative.
Council motion would be in order. Councilmember Johnson?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Rector.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Rector. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Do we have any new business that anyone from council would like to be, bring forward for consideration? Hearing none. We'll move to announcements and comments. And at this time, we'll ask of Media and Community Relations Director Jennifer Moore has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'll start the announcements off with a reminder that the City of Suffolk will observe Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday, January twentieth, and city offices will be closed. Normal operations will resume on Tuesday, January twenty-first. Normal operations will resume on Tuesday, January 21, at 8:30 AM. There is no interruption to trash and recycling schedules, and Suffolk Transit will operate on their normal schedule. The oath of office ceremony for City Council was held on Thursday, January 2, where Councilmember Williams, Vice Mayor Ward, and Mayor Duman were sworn in for a new term. Newly elected Councilmember Ebony Wright was also sworn in, representing the sleepy hole borough. In exciting news from the Economic Development Department, City Manager Al Moore has selected Janet Days as the new Director of Economic Development. Janet Days served in the United States Navy and was the first African-American commanding officer of Naval Station Norfolk. Her exemplary leadership has earned her numerous accolades, including two Legion of Merit Medals and two, excuse me, and the Defense Service Medal as well. She holds a Bachelor in Communications from ODU and a MBA from Monterey Navy Postgraduate School. Congratulations to Janet Day, and she is here with us today. The Catering Place has officially opened its newest location located in the Holland area of Suffolk. The Catering Place has served Suffolk and the surrounding area for the past 17 years. The new location will enable the Catering Place to expand their operations and expand their approach to planning events and be on the lookout for upcoming ribbon cuttings across the city this month to include Pet Supply Plus, Suffolk Humane Society, Redwood Smoke Shack, and Flicker Sticks Candle Shop. And it's tax time. And the Suffolk Workforce Development Center is partnering with the AARP Tax Aid Foundation to provide tax-free preparation assistance for low-income residents. This year, the program has extended the service area and will now offer tax preparation services to North Carolina residents as well. The last day for tax preparation service will be April 15, 2025. Appointments must be scheduled in advance, and tax preparation services are available Monday and Wednesdays from 9:45 AM to 3:00 PM by appointment only. To schedule your appointment and arrange your packet pickup, residents can call 757-774-7908. And the Suffolk Public Libraries is celebrating Black History Month with several different events throughout the month, starting with Harlem Nights, a jazz social highlighting important figures from the Harlem Renaissance. There will be a jazz music performance from band Von Trel, dancing, advertisers, and more. And for more information on this event or the other events on your screen, visit SuffolkPublicLibrary.com. And Suffolk Tourism is gearing up for the 11th installment of the Authors Festival. Avid readers and aspiring writers will enjoy meeting bestselling authors representing various genres on Saturday, March 15, at the Hilton Garden Inn. This event is free and open to the public. A separate VIP ticket is required to attend the VIP meet and greet reception that allows early access to the festival, first dibs on book purchases, and mingling with the authors. VIP tickets are $30 and are in a limited quantity and go on sale today, January 15. For more information, check out SuffolkVAAuthorsFestival.com. Suffolk Parks and Rec is hosting a public engagement meeting for input on the East Washington Corridor. The meeting will take place at the East Suffolk Rec Center on Wednesday, February 26, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. Citizens will have the opportunity to discuss improvements regarding the old school maintenance building on the property on Fridley Avenue, improvements to the Phoenix Bank Building, street landscaping, and public art projects throughout the East Washington Corridor. For more information, visit SuffolkParksAndRec.com. The City of Suffolk Public Safety Committee would like to remind all citizens of the Public Safety Portal. This online platform empowers residents to share their suggestions on community safety improvements and public safety matters. Users of the portal will also have the option to submit anonymously. We do want to remind residents, however, that in the event of an emergency, to please dial 911. For more information on the Public Safety Committee or the portal, visit SuffolkVA.us. And lastly, on your screen are the various ways for residents and businesses to stay connected to the City of Suffolk. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I will now move on to announcements from council. We're going to start with Councilmember Butler Barlow. You said you wanted to go first? Oh, that was last time. Oh, okay. I was trying. Why do I do that? Got something going on here?
Subliminal, don't really want to hear what I have to say. That's what it is. Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be back at a regular council meeting. I had a, I have a quote from a friend of mine in Richmond that said, "2025 has come out swinging." And I just want to concur with that. I think it's been a challenging first 15 days. There are so many catastrophes that we can turn to on the news with the fires out in California and freezing weather and snow here, and which is nothing in comparison, of course, but close to home, some family issues, illnesses and so forth, and a lot of losses within our community, and I'm sure everyone will speak to that. It's been a hard 15 days. And I hope that we can turn with optimism to the second half of January and that we can find and remind ourselves of all the good things that are possible with a new year and a new season. And I'm just, I'm going to leave that as my comments, that I'm going to be hopeful that, starting in February, it's going to be a good year. Thanks, everybody. Good to see everybody after a little hiatus.
Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you. I'll be kind of brief, too. We said we would try to get out early tonight. I would just like to start out by saying, good to see Mr. Marshall, our Public Works superintendent here tonight. He's been out and walking with a cane. Glad to see you out, sir, and hope you continue to improve and throw the cane away very soon. Welcome back. And I think you all did a great job during the snow and ice that we had this last week. I had nothing but great things, people saying about the streets being clean and all. So, Mr. Public Works Director and all, I think you all should be commended for a job well done. Thank you. Also, I would like to give my condolences to a former vice chief outlaw. His past, his funeral will be tomorrow. And I knew Chief Outlaw for a number of years. And he was a dear friend of mine while he was here. And it was shocking news when I heard that he was ill and next thing I heard that he had passed on to go home and be with the Lord. So my condolences go out to the outlaw family. And great man, and it's been a great service to the city. And he will be missed, I'm sure. Also, we lost another dear friend of mine. A lot of you might know him, might not know him, Dr. J.J. Ferguson. He's a minister, pastor, solist, teacher, preacher. And he also, we worked together at the shipyard. We used to ride the bus together. But he was a great leader in the community. He belonged to a lot of the ministry organizations, and he's a great pillar here in the City of Suffolk. And I want to send my condolences out to him as well. And as Councilman Barlow just said, that so much is going on, and sickness and death and everything else, that another friend, well, a fellow deacon of mine, some of you might know him, too, Floyd Gary. He's an Elephant Fork person. Mike, you probably know him right there close to your place. He was a member of my church as well, and he will be funneled last tomorrow as well. So my condolences go out to Mr. Floyd Gary and his family. I would like to welcome Captain Day to our great city, my fellow Navy person. And we're looking forward to you coming doing great things to the city and lead the city just like you led the Navy. So we know that we're looking to prosper and have great things happen under your leadership in the Economic Development Department. Congratulations and welcome. I think that's about it. I think it's good to be back. And I'm hoping that the weather is changing and a lot of people is coming out with flu, pneumonia, and everything, so please be careful. And sometime I wear my mask and sometime I don't. But I'm not ashamed when I go out in some places to wear my mask. There's nothing wrong with being protected for you and your family and others that's surrounded by you. So be safe. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilmember Johnson?
You stole my thunder, but that's okay. To the outlaw, to, I know, it's good. To the outlaw family, my sincerest condolences. I happen to be in the business that I deal with lots of death and lots of people and families in mourning. And I'd like to, from the Holy Neck Borough, I'd like to make sure that people in my borough know that we've lost another dear member of our borough, one of my dear friends, the Lois Jones, Mrs. Howard, he was Mr. Howard Jones. The Joneses have been in the Holland area their whole lives. She was the secretary at Forest Glen when I was growing up. Her son was a dear friend, still a dear friend, went to school together. And to the whole Jones family, we are certainly in our thoughts. Ms. Days, Janet Days, Captain Days? I've already told you, welcome, but welcome. We are so looking forward to working with you, and we're going to do great things in this city with you. You know, in California, I just wanted to raise the, because I can't get it out of my head. I hope we all recognize that we're living in a changing world. And when something happens like this horrible disaster in California and even the ice storms around the country that are getting more and more severe, we all need to recognize how quickly our world can change. Today, it's California. Tomorrow, it could be our community. And to watch communities pull together like they're pulling together out there, we all need to be thinking about what we would do in our community and how we're going to move ahead. So keep the folks in California in your prayers. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Good? Okay. Did you mean it? Councilmember Wright? We turned you back on. I turned you on, you turned yourself off. Okay.
Well, good evening. I just wanted to say that today is my official full meeting, and I am just grateful and thankful for the opportunity to serve. I wanted to thank the City of Suffolk staff for a superb onboarding process. It went without a hitch, and I believe that we have the best city employees here, and I'm looking forward to working with you all. I wanted to thank the citizens for coming out and voicing their concerns tonight. I encourage you to keep coming. We hear you, we're listening, and it helps us determine how we make our decisions. We are here for you. I want to congratulate Captain Janet Days as the new Economic Development Director. Welcome aboard, shipmate. And I wanted to just give my thoughts and prayers to my hometown, home state, California, for what they are dealing with. And I just want to say that we should be so grateful and thankful that we are not dealing with the tragedy that is happening there, the issues with air quality that they're having there. And so just a moment of gratitude there. I also want to say that I am so happy to be amongst great council members, and I look forward to continuing to serve. So, good night.
Councilmember Richter?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to welcome Councilmember Ebony Wright to the dais. It pushes me over a seat, takes a lot of pressure off me because I'm not going to be first at almost anything anymore. So I don't envy you the seat that you're in, but welcome. I also want to issue or say welcome to our new Economic Development Director. I can't begin to tell you how excited I was when I got the email that she had been hired. I haven't engaged in a lot of projects with Ms. Days, but I have seen her in action. I go to a lot of, as most of y'all know, I attend everything. And I've been to a lot of regional things where she has been part of the process, been on a panel and whatnot. And I've been always very impressed with her poise, with her command of the knowledge, of the facts, and whatnot. And I think her, having been in the Navy, having been to as many places as she has and probably knowing as many people as she does, there not going to be very many doors that she's going to knock on that people are not going to welcome her with open arms. And I think that's going to do nothing but bring benefits to the City of Suffolk. So retired Captain Days, thank you for joining our team here in Suffolk, and we look forward, don't want to put any pressure on you, but we look forward to great things coming from you. I don't know whether anybody saw the daily break section of the paper this morning, but our very own Cafe Davina over there on Pinner Street, associated with the Pinner House, they had a nice little write-up on the food and the beverages that you can get there. So my congratulations to Melody and the rest of the folks over there at the Pinner House for continuing to do a good job in representing Suffolk very well. Also, in the Suffolk News Herald today, I'm sure most of y'all saw it. There was an article about the Lehman House, the Old Woman's Club. I would like to, you know, Mr. Manager, maybe get with you a little bit later to discuss some of the issues that were brought up in that article and see if there's something that might potentially be done to preserve that. To Councilmember Barlow's point about January already being a little bit of a tough month today, marks the 11th anniversary of the day that I lost my mother. And, you know, every day, a day doesn't go by that I don't think about her. And today just makes it a little bit harder, particularly with you pointing out how bad it's been already. So thank you for that. I did attend the ribbon cutting of the new location for the Catering Place. I actually attended an event last night where they provided the food, and it was excellent. And so I'm sure there's going to be a lot of good stuff coming out of there. And dun-da-da-dun-da-dun, I believe that's it. And with that, I will say goodnight.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to offer my condolences to Reverend Ferguson. Mr. Bennett mentioned it. He was a pioneer, true pioneer, and pillar of our community. Just wanted to let his family know that they're in our prayers. Also, my condolences to Mr. Abraham Mitchell, known as Ham, also known as Mr. C.I.A. Like to offer his family condolences. Again, another pillar of our community has gone home. Captain Day, welcome. Welcome. But just, we know that you're going to do some great things, and welcome to our city. Mr. Marshall, great seeing you. Public Works Director and Assistant Director. Again, well, I would like to piggyback on what Mr. Bennett said. You know, you guys have done a tremendous job keeping our roadways clean. I mean, just a phenomenal job. Keep up the work. My word for the month of January is expectations. A strong belief that something is or will happen or be the case in the future. So I believe in that. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Well, yes, I don't know if we normally do it, but I just want to say, thank the council for voting for me to be the Vice Mayor one more time. I really appreciate it, and I really take it serious. And I do it a little better than I did the last time, even better. I think I did all right, too, but I will just work even harder with the confidence that you have. I mean, I think that. A lot of things I'm going to say, I already said. I attend Oak Road Baptist Church. I'll call him Bishop, but Pastor, Dr. Anthony Copeland. Appreciate what he had meant to me over the years, but I'm glad to see he's back on the pulpit where he belongs in good health. Thank God for that. Monday, MLK celebration. Come on out, celebrate Martin Luther King. Also, I wanted to mention some of the other people. Give my condolences to Mr. C.I.A., Ham Mitchell, Willie Gary, J.J. Ferguson, and what Mr. Bennett said, he's so right. Everything he said, he's right. He was extraordinary. When he preached, you felt it all in your body. He was, he was a man of God, and he can preach and give that word to you what you need. a man of God, and he can preach and give that word to you, what you need. And I want to also get my condolences to, I don't know if you know, one of the pastors in Portsmouth, Milton Blunt, to his family. He's a good pastor, Portsmouth, Virginia. He was a leader in a couple of organizations. So, I give his family condolences. He preached all around, he'd suffer all around this area. His New Mount Olive Baptist Church. And with that, I'll say God bless.
Okay. I'll try to wrap it up here and be brief. Catering Place grand opening. I don't want to get such a wrong impression when you say grand opening, like they just showed up. I mean, Corey Duncan came to Suffolk probably close to 20 years ago. I think his first job was at the Hilton Garden, and he's made a business for himself along with Chris Rice, who's, everybody loves music, can't remember. But anyhow, Chris works with them. But not only do they have a great business model, but they give back to the community in a lot of ways. They volunteer their time, and they volunteer their services, and I wish them nothing but continued success. Captain Days, thanks for choosing Suffolk, or I thank the manager for choosing you. So, thank you. Thank you. I do have a little bit of issue with me being an Army guy and you being three-page grades higher than I ever got it. I'm going to have this little inferiority complex for a while, but I'm going to try not to get, keep me down, not for long anyhow. So, welcome, and I'm sure we'll be doing great things together. We've already mentioned the passing of our former fire chief, Mark Outlaw, who was still serving for a couple of years while still on council. He had 35 years with the City of Suffolk. And my condolences to his family. It's unfortunate, I think, but I was talking to the manager that the funeral tomorrow is at the same time. We have regional meetings going on, so it's going to be difficult for us to be there. But I know the manager and I both will be thinking about the family. As usual, Councilmember Rector beat me to it. I might have to start going before you. I like to, you know, read the newspaper every morning, and it's great to open up the newspaper, and on the front page is a picture of Melody Brown. They're talking about Cafe Davina at Pinner House. And this is what we're talking about in Suffolk. If we want to make downtown Suffolk work, then Suffolk needs to become a destination. People in Portsmouth, people in Norfolk, people in Virginia Beach say, hey, let's go to Suffolk and try this. Well, it's little things like this that add up that will make that a reality, and we're going to continue to do that. So, I thank them for the efforts that they've put in to run in their business and being in business basically my entire life. I thank independent business folks. Councilman Johnson would probably agree with me, and even Councilmember Butler Barlow, you own business, too. You know, it's just different than punching a clock. Not having anything against people punching clocks, but it's a leap of faith when you sign documents, you put up your house, you do what you need to do to go into business, and you pray it's going to work, and you work. And you don't punch the clock and go home. You go home, and then the brain never stops because you're going to start worrying about everything that you got to deal with tomorrow. So, my hat's off to them, and I am confident that our city is moving as Councilman Militar used to say, with deliberate speed, right, with deliberate speed to make downtown Suffolk all we want it to be. I was going to mention a little bit about last year. I kind of got squashed at the investiture about mentioning all the good things that have happened the last couple of years, but it's still too late, so that ain't happening. I'm not going to do that either, but I would like to mention, I mean, this is the first meeting in 12 years that we haven't had Councilman Fawcett here. And I'm sure we will miss his experience, but we will be replaced by Councilmember Wright, who brings with her a lot of fresh perspectives, a lot of enthusiasm, and I think we will be just fine moving forward. And to be honest with you, in addition to Councilman Fawcett, I mean, she's already demonstrated her commitment to our community based on the work that she's already done before she got on this dais. So, I'm looking forward to great things moving forward. This East Washington Public Engagement Meeting, I didn't know anything about it until I saw the flyer. I mean, these are the kind of things that we need to do, and, you know, manager, your staff putting this out, I mean, this is awesome. I mean, we can talk about those things downtown. We put it out to the public before we do things. The improvements, the streetscape in Phoenix Bank, public art projects, all this coming up before council time and before coming up CIP time. I also wanted to mention the passing of Ham Mitchell. I call him Ham. I called him Mr. Mitchell. He's 95 years old. I was taught to respect my elders. So, ever since I met him, he's always been Mr. Mitchell. And I don't know if you ever met him, but I mean, this guy was, I mean, I don't know how to describe it, GQ, he had an outfit, and, of course, I sold him a couple of cars. And, you know, if you knew how he dressed, you could kind of figure out what he bought. And he was pretty much a laid-out Cadillac or something that would accommodate the outfit that he normally wore, be it red, green, purple, white, or orange. And I will say one thing about Mr. Mitchell. When you saw him, whether he was dealing with you business-wise, or you saw him in public, you saw him at one of those basketball games, you saw him walking down the street in a parade, I would equate it to one word, and that would be joy. It always brought a smile on your face just to watch him walk down the street. Because he didn't walk down the street, he didn't strut down the street. It was kind of in-between, you know, but I know he's going to be missed by all that knew him. And with that, my quote of the night is kind of what we talked about tonight, about solar farms and about warehouses and about how we do everything, and, you know, and nobody's perfect. Nobody has a crystal ball. And what do we do when we find out that something's gone awry? And it's exactly what Bear Bryant said, who was a former college football player and coach. For most of you sports fans, probably knew that. And that is, his quote is, "When you make a mistake, there's only three things, three things you should ever do about it. Admit it, learn from it, and don't repeat it." And with that, I'll say goodnight and ask for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Bennett?
Move to, go home.
Okay, we got a go-home from Councilmember Bennett. Councilmember Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
We're going to second the go-home. Anybody have any discussion about that? If not, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.